We're gonna have fireworks or something any time soon. All right, I'd like to call today's meeting for the Newton Falls City Council to order. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just recently, Walt Tully passed away. Walt was a member of the Newton Falls Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. He was the, uh, he did a lot of the ministerial duties. Chief, did you want to say something here about Mr. Tully?
Sure. May I? Many of you knew Walt Tully, but on August 21st, our retired police chaplain Walton Tully passed away at the age of 88. Pastor Tully, Methodist minister, served in Newton Falls Police Department from June 22nd of 2006, sworn in by then Chief Robert Carlson, and retired from his position as our police chaplain and part-time policeman even though he was really active on the road December 13th of 2015. So he's served us for nine and a half years. He'd gone through the police academy, received his first police commission in March of 77 in Knox County, and due to his ministerial duties, he moved all around the state. In each move, he always became a permanent policeman and chaplain in various police departments. In July of 93, he moved to Newton Falls, served as a special deputy with Trumbull County Sheriff's Office, and we appointed him at the time here to be a permanent police officer after he left the sheriff's office. The caring compassion of Walt Tully will never be forgotten by members of the Newton Falls Police Department. In December of 2015, Chaplain Tully, due to his health reasons, made the decision to retire, and he moved to live in March, sold his house on Woodland, moved closer to family in Mansfield. March passed away in 2017. As a result of Walt's passing, on August 24th, private family services were held by the chambers. Lord, rest in eternal peace.
Thanks, Chief. If we get a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Tonight is our regularly scheduled meeting of the Newton Falls City Council. It is Tuesday, September 3rd, 6:00 PM. If you have any electronic devices, either put them on silent or turn them off if you could. And the public comments at the beginning are for agenda items only. If you're pre-listed on the agenda, you have some time. If not, only the topics on tonight's agenda can be discussed. It's not a question and answer period with council. The last public comments are on any agenda item you'd like, and there's a three-minute time limit. We use a timer. When the timer is done, we ask you to conclude your statements. If you would also refrain from talking or making a lot of noise so everybody could hear what's going on, we would appreciate it. Would the clerk please take will?
Bariak.
Here.
Savet.
Here.
Beer.
Here.
Aubrey.
Can I have a motion to excuse Mr. Aubrey from tonight's meeting? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Will, please.
Savet.
Yes.
Beer.
Yes.
Bariak.
Just a few things. We did have a meeting in the City Hall here on economic development about a week and a half ago. Very interesting meeting, just to continue the working on the items that are on our agenda. We met today with the new state representative, Gil Blair, from the 64th district. He replaced Mr. Holmes when Mr. Holmes resigned. Very good conversation. He was a township trustee, and he understands a lot about government, thank goodness, and he is excited about economic development, and he really does want to work with us on economic development. Am I in the wrong place, right?
You should give the public.
I did. I did. Okay. Well, okay, I'll finish that, just go write the public comments. I'll pick it up later. I'm so excited about meeting him. Anybody wish to speak on tonight's agenda? Don't be afraid to say, hey, point of order, don't worry about that.
Saw that look, didn't you?
Yeah, I did.
There's a couple things, I'm assuming the tax budget for Resolution 43-2019 is the regular tax budget that's going to, of our resolution tonight, is the one that's going to the Trumbull County Auditor's. That's my assumption, I believe you're not correct, but I know you can't burden me if I'm wrong. And even rich is my question, and I know, again, you can't answer me, but that's my question, on that one. And the...
That's the buzzer.
That's the buzzer?
No.
She said the secret word.
Yeah.
2019-25, why are we authorizing the sale, we being, you that are representatives, authorizing a sale of property? I don't understand this, why he said he's involved in it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to address council? Sorry about that. Very excited about economic development, and he understands what we're doing here. He likes what we're doing and offered his assistance any way that he could. We kind of grilled him a little bit today. I think he does really understand, and we appreciate that. Also, just as Mr. Aubrey's not here, but Mr. Aubrey just celebrated his 30th year with U.S. Safety Gear. That's a nice milestone. They had a nice party over the weekend. When we talk about doing community service and stuff like that, everybody has a different way to do things. And a couple, well, a week and a half ago, Ed Workman from Workman's Escavating was asked to move the great big rock from in front of St. Mary's School over to the high school. And I just happened to see, I sat out in front of the garage, and I happened to see some equipment come in over there, trackhoe and stuff, and I was kind of surprised to see a trackhoe show up over there, so I wasn't sure what was going on, so I kind of watched. And I watched him try to lift this rock that weighed more than 8,000 pounds, because his equipment was only good for 8,000 pounds. Long story short, I saw they couldn't get it high enough to get it on their big trailer. I went over and offered my trailer. They still couldn't get it on there. And his son was over there, and his son finally came up with a way to get that rock up on that trailer. And kind of why I say that is, a job that he offered to do that might only take an hour or two, turned out to be almost a full eight-hour job, just trying to move a rock. And now it's over in front of the school, and it's painted orange, says "Go Tyrese", it looks really nice over there. But, you know, he volunteered his time and his men and his equipment to move this, and it just turned out to be more of a project than he ever anticipated. Also, I want to thank the Kiwanis, Mrs. Wojcik, and Nancy Hoffman, who is the local lieutenant governor, for their work on the backpack program. It's always encouraging to watch people do things and donate their time, effort, and money that does things to involve our youth in the community, and the backpack program is a great program for the schools. Congratulations to Ms. Wojcik and Ms. Hoffman for their work on the backpack program. Mr. Savet?
I'm not.
Mr. Bariak?
I attended no meetings.
Mr. Beer?
I attended the fire board meeting. David and I both attended, and we discussed them possibly coming in on the emergency broadcasting system in town, and, you know, talked about a couple of other issues. I think it was a productive meeting, and that's basically what I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Munson?
All right, for the finance department, we have been receiving the citizens' calls on the utility billing questions, and again, that was what we're researching it, and we take pride in customer service. So if you can't get ahold of us, our phones have been a little busy this past two weeks, but just want to congratulate our staff. We want to make sure everyone has the best customer service with the utility bills. We're here to answer your questions. Anyone ever has a question on their bill, we're always available for that. But again, the last month, what we have overall found in conclusion, it's a higher consumption, and we had, the weather was hot, and there were more days on the bill this past time. So again, if anyone has any questions, we'll be more than happy to assist you in those matters. A very important deadline has been met with a lot of tremendous work, and that is, our 2018 financial report has been converted in what's called a comprehensive annual financial report. What that entailed is to bring the past two years, which is cash basis in Ohio, we did a full accrual, getting it to a GAAP basis, so that we can be more, showing more information, more involved. We also involved in a 10-year project of doing financial trends, demographics, looking at income tax, looking at a lot of different trends in housing and stuff. This is involved in this comprehensive annual financial report. A lot of man-hours and have been involved in this. So on August the 28th, we submitted the report on time to the state auditor's office, and so our goal is by the end of this week to file a certificate with the Government Financial Officers Association, and we just pray to God that we get that certificate, because we feel that we have fulfilled, there's a long list of requirements. In addition, I just want to give a quick update. It's not the second meeting in the month where we go in-depth with the finances, but over the summer. As of right now, it's September the 3rd. I just want to let you know, we have received $7,746,931.38 in revenue year-to-date. The city has spent $7,822,536.50 is what has been spent year-to-date. Obviously, we had a carryover, and as if we closed the books right now, we would end up, for all of our funds, a carryover $8,248,582.91. So we are financially stated.
Attorney Fitz?
Thank you, sir. I have nothing to report. I would like to, at the time we bring ordinance 2019-25, transfer of property, I'd like to give a short explanation at that time, and that legislation's in front of council. Other than that, I have no report, but I'm available for questions.
Any questions for Attorney Fitz?
The finance director will be addressing the issue of the ordinance or the resolution certifying the property tax collection rates, but she will explain to you that those come from the county, and we've taken no local action. That varies with the county's action. But perhaps most importantly, what I wanted to mention to all the members of council and to members of public, that an issue has come to the forefront in some conversation with Councilman Savet and with members of the Eagle Point neighborhood, there has been demonstrated some concern about what's happening with reference to the intersection in front of the Rite Aid drugstore, which is a sort of a concrete part of Route 534, which we presumed, when the state said we're resurfacing all of Route 534, that of course included that intersection. The difficulty that we've had as relates to that is, the state has talked to us about the fact that that was not in their original plans that were certified. That comes as a shock to all of us, and it comes as a shock to us because of the fact that when somebody says they're resurfacing all of 534, you don't think they're going to hit the delete key when it comes to a part of state Route 534, namely that intersection. I have, since that time, had numerous conversations with representatives of the Ohio Department of Transportation. The mayor has had some dialogue with them as well. Councilman Savet is helping us in this effort, and in addition to that, the dialogue we had with our state representative today was to get the state of Ohio to resolve that. So, we hope to resolve that before the snow flies. It may eventually mean another project involves the state coming in, doing something with that, with that concrete in that road, but our objective is to at least come up with some kind of short-term solution. It just, it troubles me that we have all these new roads surrounding this intersection, and then have the intersection omitted would be a terrible shame, and we intend to resolve that. I'm going to be meeting on September 16th with the Eagle Point Association membership, and that will be in this building just before that council meeting begins. Hopefully, I'll have some news by then, so don't give up the ship. It's a matter of getting the state of Ohio to do what we believe is really their obligation by virtue of the fact that it is a state route, and by virtue of the fact that that intersection has really been neglected in past resurfacing efforts by the state of Ohio. There's no reason for the intersection to be overlooked. That's our opinion, and we intend to press our opinion forward, and as in all things, we anticipate success in that.
Let him finish his report.
That concludes my report.
Mr. Lynch. We will still be paving to Milton Boulevard, though, on the other end.
Yes.
Okay, that's still in the works? I mean, that hasn't been nixed, has it?
No, that, no. The concern that we had was that the state's original plans for the purpose of 534 should never have deleted that intersection to begin with.
Well, I'm just asking about...
Yeah, no. Right.
Down towards my ward.
That's correct.
At Milton, we are still going to go to Milton Boulevard.
That's right.
And there was talk of us getting maybe Milton Boulevard done? Is that, is there still any talk of that?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, 534...
The state's not doing it.
The state's not doing it.
We're not going to do it.
No, but actually, that part of 534 is in very good condition. Why would you rip up a good road?
I didn't know, but I knew we were going to do the Milton Boulevard.
Yeah.
I haven't seen it done yet.
Yeah.
One thing, too, that we can say on this, the state didn't actually nix that, they just never included it. When the drawings came out, when they decided to do this project, let me just say this, too. First of all, we have a great working relationship with the state of Ohio, and we don't want to do anything that's going to jeopardize that. However, we certainly do need to push our position here to have something done with that. And we are working with Eastgate and with the state to see if we can bring a solution to this sooner than later, because they're saying that the project, it's a concrete road, and they don't resurface concrete. And we are responsible to do maintenance on the road within the city limits, and I told them, I says, we've patched and patched and patched and patched on the blacktop, but we don't have the ability to patch on concrete. And it's not so much that that concrete needs patched, it's just all broken up and cracked and coming and going, and that's a whole different idea than patching. But they don't pave over concrete, and they said it's about a $500,000 project, and it was never included in the paving. They didn't come out and say that. They said it's on the prints. David looked at the prints, and he said you need a, some kind of a high-class engineer to look at that to even determine that it wasn't going to be completed, but it was never communicated that they weren't going to do that concrete intersection. So there are a couple of things we're looking at to try to get that fixed, and hopefully we'll be able to do that, so.
That completes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for the city manager? Any changes to tonight's agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the August 5th, 2019 regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Will, please.
Beer?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
We have a public hearing tonight on ordinance 2019-23, rezoning lots within the city and adopting a zoning map. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the ordinance? Seeing none. Under unfinished business, we have a motion to accept ordinance 2019-23. Would the clerk please read that by title?
An ordinance rezoning lots within the city of Newton Falls to correspond with the city of Newton Falls Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map.
Your motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Savet? If you would open that for us, this is your, this is your project.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been in the facets since 2017, I want to say, specifically the zoning map portion. So this has been a long time in the making in getting it to this point. This will relieve some of the parcels that are currently, clearly residential parcels that were zoned as commercial, so it will save those individuals of having getting variances and other permits that they weren't, or they shouldn't have to get, being a residential parcel.
Anyone else? Will, please.
Bariak?
Recuse.
Savet?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is that an order with three? Yes. Under new business, would the clerk please read ordinance 2019-25 for its first reading?
An ordinance selling 0.0572 acres of parcel 53-264960 to John and Melody Turner.
Is there a motion to accept ordinance 2019-25?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
What we have here is, it's a 16-foot section that goes back about 120 feet. The Turners own both sides. You will find over the course of a city being around as long as we've had, that every once in a while, something comes up kind of odd and unusual. The city owns, it's a 16-foot strip that's attached to another parcel of ours that apparently went back to a trolley car line, I don't know, 100 years ago. Having said that, the Turners approached us about four or five months ago and said, we have two pieces of property at each side of this, we would like to purchase the stuff in between. I went to all the utility departments, the city manager, verified with everyone. We sent out, we told the Turners, we would consider this matter if they paid for the survey, and they paid for all the recording of the deeds and documents. So we have no expense with regard to this matter. What we're doing is, we're cleaning up a little section of the town where this is kind of messed up with how the lots are laid out. It's of no value to the city. All we're doing is kind of cleaning up some messes, somewhat similar to the zoning things that we've changed today. We're just making it easy for future generations to deal with this, with this lot. And what's very important is it's .0572 pieces of property. This is less than, you know, one-tenth of an acre. So there's really no, no long-term value to that piece of property, there's no city use as it stands now. So I'm suggesting, in order to clarify matters, that council passes member this measure, and then we'll have them transfer it later date. Again, there's no expense to us.
He's been taking care of it too often.
It's yours, hasn't it?
My understanding, yes.
Yes.
Anything else? Anyone else? Will, please.
Savet?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Motion passes. Would the clerk please read Resolution 43-2019?
Resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Is there a motion to accept Resolution 43-2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Your honor and members of council, this is a resolution that is part of the 2020 budget. What we did back in May, in June, we actually had a tax budget hearing, presented our numbers and projected carryover for the year 2020. By July 20th of each year, it is required by law to submit this 2020 budget to the Trumbull County Budget Commission, which they then approved. This portion of the resolution per the Schedule A will show you that the city has 2.5 mils inside, which is property tax. What this is certifying is our potential property tax for the year 2020. So approximately $130,400 is going to go to the general fund, and approximately $17,932 is going to go into our special police pension fund. So what you're certifying is for the 2020, our property tax dollars that we'll receive for next year.
No increase.
Right.
Any other questions? Will, please.
Beer?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Would the clerk please read ordinance 44-2019?
Resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Utility Contracting Inc. for 2018 storm sewer improvements phase B within the city of Newton Falls.
Is there a motion to accept Resolution 44-2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. As Councilman Savet has so carefully followed along the Eagle Point project, this brings forward phase B of the project that was slightly amended from the original plans. As the councilman knows, we've had several meetings with the homeowners there in order to make sure the size of the pipe was increased in order to accommodate the amount of storm water, and Councilman Batiste worked very hard on this. And as you know, this was also the subject of funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission. So I congratulate all those that helped us get to this point, and you can put an exclamation point on the, on the resolution of those drainage issues over there by passage of this matter tonight.
Mr. Lynch, this will not jeopardize any other projects that we had planned on moving forward with next year, will it?
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Will, please.
Bariak?
Yes.
Savet?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Could we motion to set trick-or-treat for Thursday, October 31st, from 5:00 to 6:30 PM, and the cakewalk will start at 7:00 uptown?
So moved.
Discussion? Will, please.
Savet?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Bariak?
I have spoken to Mr. Bariak, chief, and the city manager about properties in the East River Gardens that isn't being taken care of, especially on the 200 block where I live. The neighbors are getting pretty perturbed about it. Nothing is being done. They go over and cut the grass, but they leave everything else there. It's vacant, and they're, I mean, it's a hazard there. And it's nearly isolate on our block, and we, the people on the 200 block, are getting tired of it. And we want something done now that there's a full-time surveillance, a full-time nuisance inspector. Let them do the job and do it right. And also, another thing, I think he was city artist, he should have his time. You take your dog up there and he messes, you clean it. I see people go up there and they, they take their dogs, and they mess, and they keep on walking, then they take kids up there, and some of them don't have shoes on, and they're playing, and they get pieces on their feet. So if you have a dog, then you take the toilet, clean it up first. All right? That's the end. And I want to tell you that we, some of us pay taxes on the drive, so I hope this issue is resolved. Thank you.
State of the Union, 332 River Road. I live in the village on the fourth ward. I would like to take a few minutes to thank the voters in the fourth ward for their support in the primary election, and I hope they'll continue to support me in November. I'd like to give a shout-out to the firemen who installed my smoke detectors. You can choose your day and time, and they were on time, very courteous, installed two smoke detectors, took about 15 minutes. They asked a few questions as, where do you sleep, so they could put your smoke away? How many people sleep in your house? Let's see, they want to know about a fire extinguisher? Did I have a carbon monoxide detector? They checked in and said that... They're happy with the water power, they love the Newton Falls TV, the road paving, and many people stated, finally, something being done for the people. The other question they wanted to know was how I felt about the community center. So I said, "I'm only, that would only be one vote." I said, "But we'll have to do what council and the mayor and the manager thinks is the best." You know, I can't say that it won't be torn down or it'll be renovated. I will say I will work, and that's it. That's all I've got to say. Good enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all 1:08 was calling. A couple things. The walk for SAP, which is Substance Abuse Prevention, isn't that coming up? It's September 15th. Here in City Hall Parking Lot, we ask that everybody come out and support our community, our kids in the community, the adults also. It's for everybody to participate in any group, organization, anybody else that wants to set up our churches, everybody to come out and walk with us and be a part of this. Any and all of our representatives. It's a good cause, it's only for a couple hours of your time. We'll set up at 1:00, the walk will come out, and start out at 2:00. And please, everybody, come out and support and learn something, too. Our police department and the chief is always been beside us with this and has information also on educational materials. And we have T-shirts also that you can get, and they're neon colors. That's basically all I have, too. There's a few things also over on, let me say, our side of the city in the fourth ward. Where the sort of forgotten section of the city, the ADA compliance over there has not seen any, any light of day, let's put it that way. There's the ramps and whatnot, and the sidewalks and curbs and curbing has not been done throughout that section of the city, the village, when it was a city and now that it's back to a village again. And if you were to be handicapped or disabled or pushing a stroller or on a bike, you'd find you're not going to be able to do it and cross the street on simple streets, because the curbing, if you go to cross the street, some of the curbs are up this high to cross the streets. And when my daughter and I were pushing the stroller, we pushed it together to try and cross one street, and it was literally that high, we wound up going out into the street with the stroller, double stroller with the two babies, and had to go into the street and then go up a driveway. That's how bad the one was, the one intersection. So that needs to be addressed, because if the extra monies can be spent, which are beautiful, and they are, like the spray bar I said, the water tower and things like that, and all that money that's been spent is absolutely gorgeous, and no debate about that whatsoever, it's beautiful, and people are loving it. However, if the extra monies can be spent there, then the compliance standards that need to be met by state standards, federal, county, community, et cetera, that have to be met and are not in our own village, throughout the whole village, that needs to be seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Savet?
I have nothing else to say.
Mr. Barryak?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say a couple of things tonight. Today, I received, I would like to thank the Newton Falls Area Chamber of Commerce Association for the honor of being named Business of the Month in consideration of Bayou Tree Services Development of the New Commerce Park. I'm happy I had the opportunity to help my community and volunteer my services and be able to give back. One other thing I'd like to give us tonight, I would also like to thank VFW Post 33332 and the auxiliary for permitting Mr. Lynch and myself to help serve the veterans from Wade Park Hospital with dinner and other activities. It was a wonderful experience, and I want to thank the veterans for their service. Thank you tonight.
I have nothing to add. Attorney Fitz?
Nothing further, sir.
Mr. Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say thank you to everybody for their help and their patience in the launching of the Newton Falls Tigers football game, first live broadcast in the history of our community. Next Friday, or this coming Friday, there's another home game, and that will be broadcast as well, and you'll see a number of features that will be appropriately and completely in place so that it can be enjoyed. And for everybody that's been advertising, please contact the Touchdown Club. And we are also taking advertising of all sorts. That includes political ads, so it's a political season, so anybody that's interested in spending some scratch and putting an ad during the Newton Falls Tigers live broadcast of football, please do so. All revenue from advertising goes to the Touchdown Club, and it's a great investment. And we also have a pretty darn good team this year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a reminder, school's back in session. I happened to notice today, some kids were horsing around on their way home, and they were kind of running across the green spots out toward 534. They were outside the school zone, and, you know, they, they don't think about what they're doing, they just do it. And just be careful when you're out there, watch the kids, you never know what they're going to do. So school's back, watch the buses, and we'll have a good school year. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Clerk, please.
Beer?
Yes.
Barryak? Savet?
Yes.
She's coming to every meeting. She's coming to every...
She is not.
She's coming to every meeting because we've never had one.